Jagpreet Singh. Good evening. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. My name is Jagpreet Singh. I'm a senior community organizer at CHIA CDC in Jackson Heights. I'm here on behalf of over 500 of our Bangladeshi tenants who could not be here because of Ramadan. I also ask that you keep this holy month in mind next year when you're deciding the dates and the times, just to make sure we have an inclusive community here representing our true diverse fabric of Queens. In about 40 minutes, these tenants, our Bangladeshi Muslim tenants, will be breaking their fast and enjoying a great time with their family, but in the back of their minds worried, is this the last Ramadan we're going to be able to spend in our homes? Is this the last Ramadan we're going to be able to spend in our actual communities? This city has done so much for our immigrants over the last few years, whether it's IDNYC, the legal protections we have, or the refusal to cooperate with ICE. But what sorely lacking is the protection of the one place they should feel safe: their homes, their abodes, their safe havens, the place where they have created community, the place where they pray, where their children are growing up. I said this last year, and I'll say it again. How can we call ourselves a sanctuary city if we cannot protect our tenants where they need it the most? If we cannot protect our immigrants where they need it the most: their homes. A rent increase for many families means eviction. And that's true. We all know that. Displacing them is sending them to places where they're not protected, where ICE can actually come and find them, where they're not in their communities anymore, where they can face discrimination, where the human rights laws don't exist to the level that they exist in our great city here. I don't want to see a family deported because they were forced into an eviction and they had to leave. But if you increase the rent, that's exactly what's going to happen. And those deportations are going to be on you. We ask the board here that we demand a rent freeze so we can protect our most vulnerable communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I just want to mention that we do have more hearings coming up, which I think fall after Ramadan. And we do have a hearing schedule out in the hallway, so please take a copy of that because we do have several more hearings coming. All right, the next three speakers will be Jorge Rodriguez, Judith Bernard, and Alfredo Ortiz.
Good evening. I didn't know I had a following, but apparently I do. My name is Jorge Rodriguez. I live in Corona. I'll skip the address and the complex where I live to make it easier on myself. I see a lot of new faces, so welcome. First, let me start off by saying that the recommendations from the RGB are unacceptable. There should absolutely be no increase approved. Let me explain. Landlords are getting richer by all the laws created in this state, all in their favor: preferential rent, MCI, 20% vacancy, vacancy control. The RGB should not award them with more benefits. It's just ridiculous. Our neighbor had just moved on my floor because her rent increased from $1,200 to $1,532 in two years. And that include, that's because she's got preferential rent and a bunch of MCI's. Another neighbor has moved to Baltimore since he could not afford the preferential rent increases. With my neighbor's moving, the landlords now can increase the rent on those apartments by 20%, plus add any improvement made to that apartment. So you can imagine what the new tenants will be paying. As you may know, at the point the rent reaches $2,700, it will be removed from rent stabilization protections. We need to keep housing in New York affordable. I would love to stay in New York City. I do not want to move, but at the rate it's going, it's almost impossible. On top of all the profits the landlords are making, and with due respect, I cannot believe the RGB is thinking of approving a rent increase. It just does not make sense. So I beg the RGB to approve a rent rollback: zero increase.
Thank you.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. And if I may say something quickly. I can't read your name. Ms. Catherine?
Kathleen Roberts.
Okay, the moderator. You keep referring people to the lobby to talk about, to talk to DHCR about MCI's. MCI's are like 0% change once it goes through DHCR. You can fight him, you can go to court. The few that have been decreased where I live were appealed by the landlord in DHCR, and then they went to the state court. And guess what? The state approved another increase. So what's the use of referring people to DHCR about MCI's? It does not help. So 0% increase. Thank you.
Judith Bernard.
Mi nombre es Alfredo Ortiz. Yo vivo en 15007 88 Avenue, los apartamentos de Sara. Yo fui super, por eso fui.
Hold on, excuse me. Could you stop for just one moment? Is Judith Bernard here? Okay, would you come forward? You're actually next. Mr. Ortiz, you'll be after Ms. Bernard. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. And thanks to RGB for having us in here today. The main reason we're here, all of us, is for rent freeze. The rent is just too exorbitant, impossible to live in New York. Example, I retired a year ago. And just because I retired, medication is out of control when it come on the line of me because of rent freeze we need. Please, we are all appealing to you all, you members, to speak up for us. Please do not, I repeat, please do not approve for rent to be increased. I was paying, just for example, for my medication, $25.50 for a container of three. I went out yesterday to pick up my medication. I almost had a heart attack. It was reduced for one pin, $25.50. Impossible. We need your help to have the rent freeze. A lot of people moving out of New York, including me, I'm deciding on that also because it's just impossible to make ends meet. Social Security, it's not much. The few dollars they are giving us, they're taking it back by the means. You cannot afford a decent meal, you can't take care of your children, you can't take care of your household. It's impossible.
Thank you very much for your testimony, your time's up.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. Mr. Alfredo Ortiz, now it's your turn. Please come forward.
Mi nombre es Alfredo Ortiz. Yo fui super de 15001 a 1511 de Higüey Avenue, que pertenecen ahora a Sara. Lo primero que le voy a decir que yo nunca viví en ese, hace que vivimos esos 35 años, y nunca había visto que uno tenía un aire acondicionado y viene una compañía aumentales cinco pesos por mes.
Okay, just a moment. Let's get the interpretation, please.
My name is Alfredo Ortiz, and I was a super at, la dirección es... At 150 Park and 15007 88th Avenue in Jamaica. I was working there for 35 years. I never saw a landlord come in and charge anyone $5 extra per month per air conditioner unit.
Bueno, después de todo, yo no tenía, yo no tenía, le firmar con este lando. Empezó, el nuevo lando empezó ahora a firmar en febrero de este año. Esa es la primera parte que, esto es ilegal. Lo segundo que le voy a decir es que aquí el MCI está cobrando aquí, está aplicando para cobrar entre todos, todos 912 pesos, 14 mil más. Mientras yo fui super ahí, se puso rufo nuevo y se hizo insulation y se hizo pinpointing and roofing por más de 25 años. Es da.
So, the new landlords took over last February, and I didn't have a lease signed with them, so they can't increase my rent. That's illegal. There's another issue I want to talk about is the MCI's that they, that they said for pointing and roofing of the building, $912,000, and for roof insulation, $14,850.
Ellos empezaron a cambiarle rufo y a cambiarla, hacieron, este, pointing. Eso es ilegal porque ya estaba hecho. Así que, este... Entonces ellos no tenían que poner, hacer nuevo rufo ni hacer pointing porque no se va a hacer la cosa ahora dos veces. Yo hicieron una aplicación para hacer eso, pero ningún inspector de la ciudad vino a checar si era verdad o era mentira. Ahora en los departamentos de Housing están los récoltes.
So these two so-called improvements was work that was unnecessary because it had just been done before they bought the building. So there wasn't a need for repointing the brickwork and there was no need for rer roofing anything. So again, it's an unfounded or illegal claim for an MCI. Thing is that when they applied for this, no inspectors from any agency came to see if the work had indeed been done?
Quiere decir que ellos no tienen derecho a hacer ningún aumento ni hacer ninguna explicación hasta que un inspector de la ciudad chequiera si se necesitaba o no se necesitaba. Los otros dueños del bíndico, primero era Pat Brown, que le vendió a Higüey Avenue. Los otros dueños nunca hicieron ningún aumento.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Your time is up. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Right, so there shouldn't be any increases for work done without there being proof that the work was done or that there was ever a need for that work to be done in the first place. And that should happen with an inspector, with an official inspection. The previous owner, Pat Brown, never increased for maintenance work on the building, never increased rents for that. But the current LLC started off doing that right away.
Thank you. The next three speakers will be Nelly Jimenez, Ivan Contreras, and Elena Tzul. Nelly Jimenez?
Buenas noches.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. Just remember to pause after every few sentences so we can get the interpretation, please.
Okay. Mi nombre es Nelly Jimenez y vivo en la 14848 de la 88a. Y soy también parte de este pueblo que está aquí presente con nuestras quejas y en esta noche queremos que no... Todos los que hemos hablado ya, necesitamos ser escuchados por ustedes, que no se queden en el aire nuestras voces, que puedan ser atendidas por ustedes porque ustedes son las personas que pueden...
Let's take a pause here before we go on.
Hello, my name is Nelly Jimenez. I live on 148... 14884 Avenue. I'm part of this community here. We're here with our complaints and all of us who have spoken already. I hope that you have all heard us.
Somos de las personas que vivimos en los edificios de los landos y lo el lando que tenemos en este momento es Sara Realty. Es una persona muy abusiva, muy agresivos con las personas que vivimos y ellos se aprovechan de las leyes que ustedes mismos les aprueban a ellos. Y una de las leyes que ustedes le han aprobado hay lejanía ahí y ellos han tomado acciones de reconstruir aparentemente los edificios, pero nuestros apartamentos están podridos por dentro.
Okay, we need to take a, we need to get a pause here for the interpretation, please.
So we are the people that live in the Sara Realty buildings, and this person is very abusive. They take advantage of the laws that you as a RGB have put in place, for example, like the MCI.
Y de esa forma nos han incrementado nuestra renta a todos los que vivimos en los edificios de ellos. Nos han crecido en renta porque ahora hasta los cuartos que tenemos los tenemos que pagar aparte de nuestra renta y eso hizo que la renta subiera y nuestros sueldos no son grandes, son pocos, como nosotros.
And in that way, they have incremented the rent. Even, we even have to pay for the rooms that we have in our home aside, apart from the rent that we already pay. We don't have the wages to afford these increments.
Si tenemos que pedir que arreglen nuestros apartamentos, ellos solamente hacen algo por encima y nuestros apartamentos siguen podridos. La cocina de mi apartamento está podrida. Ellos no arreglan, pero sí la renta está incrementada hasta arriba.
And if we ask them to fix something else, they charge for that. And so we have a lot of things that are not fixed and... And so supposedly they do fix like our kitchens, for example, but underneath, nothing has changed.
Nosotros queremos que ustedes nos oigan. Con todo el respeto que ustedes se merecen como una comunidad pobre de Nueva York, porque no somos ricos, somos pobres. Necesitamos ser atendidos por ustedes y por favor, deberían de ayudarnos de una forma de frizar nuestra renta o de ponernos el 0% en nuestra renta definitivamente.
Thank you.
And we ask you to hear us out, please, to help us to freeze the rent or a 0% increment. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, I need to make an announcement. If you want to speak, you have to register, and registration will close at 8:30. So if there's anyone who hasn't registered, who wants to speak this evening, you need to see the RGB staff in the lobby and sign up to speak.
Si hay alguien más que no se haya inscrito y quiere testificar esta noche, por favor, salgan a la entrada de recepción y se pueden inscribir con el personal de la junta reguladora ahí afuera.
Thank you. Ivan Contreras?
Buenas.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm gonna use my right to get translation, okay, if it's okay with you. Yes? Y lo voy a hacer porque ustedes tienen el derecho y nosotros tenemos el derecho a entender qué es lo que queremos decir porque somos nosotros los que estamos sufriendo. Me gustaría comenzando, me gustaría comenzar esto diciéndole a la chair member, Ms. Catherine, que por favor deje terminar los testimonios de los inquilinos. Es lo mínimo que puede hacer.
So, good evening. I'm gonna take advantage of my right to receive interpretation and language access, so others can too, because after all, it's for us to be able to understand. It's important for us to be able to understand. We are the ones who are suffering and who are most affected here. I would like to begin by asking the chair to kindly allow testimonies to be finished because that's why people came.
Me gustaría también decirle a todos los que están acá presentes que si por favor me ayudan parándose. And I would like...
And I would like to ask everybody who's present here tonight if they could please help me by standing.
Porque yo creo, yo creo que el Borque está ahí enfrente no nos escucha o no nos ve. Todos los años es lo mismo. Todos los años tenemos que venir a decirle a este Borque que no podemos, que no podemos aceptar incrementos más, que no podemos pagarlos. Y ellos parece que no nos escucharán. Son sordos, entonces yo quiero que ustedes le muestren, que muestren la cara de frustración que tenemos porque parece que ellos no nos escucharán.
So, I want everyone to stand so the board can see us, so they can see your face. We do this every year. We come here every year and we tell them about our difficulties, our frustrations, that we cannot afford an increase, another increase. And they don't seem to see or hear us at their death, and this is our frustration. So please, show them who you are.
Entonces yo creo que ya todo lo estamos diciendo, que ya todo se ha dicho. Pero a mí me gustaría contarles algo que pasó, que el Borque quiso hacer. No los representantes de los inquilinos. Ellos dos estuvieron ahí para defendernos. Pero el Borque quiso callarnos. Quiso que nosotros no hiciéramos, no gritáramos, no pelearamos por nuestros derechos. Y eso me parece que es algo que no, que no es, es inconcebible.
But I want to tell you about something that happens. Everything has been said already. We're still here. But one thing I wanted to tell you about is what the board tried to do. Not the tenant representatives, they stood behind us. But the board tried to keep us quiet. They tried to take away our ability to speak.
Y entonces yo quiero que ustedes le digan a ellos. ¿Verdad? ¿Qué queremos? Pero que nos escuchen. ¿Qué queremos? ¿Qué queremos? ¿Y cuándo? ¿Cuándo? ¿Cuándo? ¿What do we want? ¿What do we want? ¿And when? ¿When? ¿No se escucharon?
Thank you.
Did you hear us?
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to the next speaker, I just want to explain, I don't think Mr. Contreras was here when I spoke earlier. But the board as a whole has agreed that the reason for two-minute limit is so that we can hear as many of you as possible. There are many of you who want to speak. And so it's in order to hear as many people as possible that we place a limit. We understand that it's difficult, but that way we get to hear as many people as possible in the limited time that we have. And I thank you very much for your cooperation. The next speaker is Elena Tzul.
Buenas noches.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Gracias a ustedes por venir, ¿verdad? Yo sé que ustedes nos van a escuchar. Lo que quiero es decirles que por favor escúchenos, que ya la renta sea frizada. Yo hace tres años, Sara compró el edificio y estaba pagando $1,180. Yo tengo cuatro niños y ahorita estoy pagando $1,806 dólares y cada año me están subiendo el 6% porque me cobraron, están cobrando dos millones por hacer el rufo.
So please hear us. I know you hear us. Two years ago, three years ago, Sara management bought my building and three years ago, I was paying $1,180 a month in rent. I have, ¿cuántos niños? I have four children. I am currently paying $1,806. And I'm getting annual increases of 6% because they had an MCI of $2 million on rer roofing.
Y nos cobraron $500,000 por las puertas y solo me dieron dos llaves. Y eso no es justo porque yo ya estoy pagando, me subieron el 2% de lo que el MCI, lo que suben el Housing y el 6% del rufo y más el otro MCI de la puerta y 117 me cobraron por cada cuarto, son $445 dólares.
So this is not fair. They also changed the doors and billed $500,000 for that, and I only got two keys. And that's not fair. I have to face the 2% increase from the rent guidelines board that tacked on to the 6% increase for the roofing MCI plus the one for the doors which is coming and that adds up currently to $117 per room in my apartment, or $445 extra a month.
Eso no es justo. Yo les pido un favor a ustedes porque ustedes tienen ese poder de ayudarnos y no lo hagan solo por mí sino que háganlo por toda la gente. Mis hijos ya van a necesitar el college dentro de dos años, van a ir al college. El de 13 años me dijo que él ya iba a empezar a trabajar para ayudarme. Eso no es justo. Yo lo hice en mi país de siete años, pero eso fue en mi país. Pero en ese país no puede ser esto.
So I'm asking you, please, not just for me, but for everybody. You have the power to help us in this situation. My children are getting older and will be going to college in two years. My 13-year-old told me that he was gonna start working so he could help with the bills. And that's not right. That's not fair. That's what I had to do. That's what I had to do in my country when I was seven years old and I started working. But that's not right for here and for now.
Ya no hay paz, ya no hay tranquilidad. Hoy sabía que veníamos acá. Saben que puso un sayay en la puerta y en todo el edificio fue a poner que va a haber un barbecue el sábado para todos los inquilinos. ¡Mmm! ¿Qué es eso?
There's no peace, there's no rest. Today, knowing that we are coming to this hearing, the landlord put up a sign in the lobby and in front of the building saying that there's a barbecue for all the tenants on Saturday. That's not right.
Por favor, renta, por favor, pongan la renta ya 0%, please. Porque yo ya debo el 6% el otro año. Ya debo un año el 6%. Please, yo ya tengo 21 años de estar en ese edificio. Yo no me quiero ir también de ahí.
The rent, please, the rent. Right, I'm already facing a mandatory 6% increase every year. Please control the rent increase. And I've been there for 21 years, I don't want to have to move.
Por favor, freeze en la renta, please, por favor, que solo eso, ustedes nos pueden ayudar. Yo fui a housing, ellos no me ayudaron nada también.
Thank you.
Please freeze the rent, and that's how you can help us, that's what you can do. I went to housing, they were no help, they couldn't do it, they wouldn't do anything for me. So please, freeze the rent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speakers are Argentina Valdez, Rosmira Montoya, and Anderson Fizamí. Argentina Valdez? Is she here, Ms. Valdez? She's coming, okay.
Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Yo soy Argentina Valdez. Vivo en el 96 10 de la 37 Avenida Corona. Los dueños del edificio son BRG. Vivo ahí por 44 años, y estoy decepcionada.
Good evening. My name is Argentina Valdez. I live at 96 10 37th Avenue in Corona, and the landlord is BRG. I've lived there for 44 years.
Estoy decepcionada viendo que yo en 44 años, que vivo ahí, la gente se ha tenido que ir porque la renta le sube, le sube, y lo que se han quedado tienen que rentar habitación para poder pagar a la renta. Por favor, a la junta, ayudenlos a los inquilinos, que por eso estamos aquí todos pidiéndole a ustedes clemencia. Pónganse la mano en su corazón para que sientan, a ver lo que nosotros estamos sintiendo. Gracias.
I have felt the disappointment of seeing people over the last 44 years that I've lived there, seeing people have to move, seeing people have to move because they can't afford the rent anymore. And those people who are able to stay is only by way of having to rent some of their rooms for extra income. RGB, please help us, have mercy. Put your hands on your hearts and think about what we're feeling, what we're living.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosmira Montoya?
Buenas noches, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Rosmira Montoya. Vivo en el 88 06 Parsons Boulevard, apartamento 9D, Jamaica. Esto es de Sara. En abril me tocó renovar mi lease. Lo renové por dos años, el 2%, todo estaba bien, lo mandé todo. Y ahora me llega una carta y me dicen que tengo el incremento que es, es 1,556.25, que porque habían tenido una falla.
Good evening. My name is Rosmira Montoya. I live at 88 06 Parsons Boulevard, and I'm a tenant with the landlord's era as well. I've lived there for 39 years, and I renewed my lease, signed a two-year lease back in April, so that's with a 2% increase. And everything was in order, everything was sent off. And now I get a letter saying that my increase is actually 1,556.25 because there was a mistake in the calculations.
Mi esposo está dishabilitado, sufrió un estro hace tres años. Yo trabajo, y lo que ganó, y lo que le dan a mi esposo no nos alcanza para todo ese incremento que me subieron ahora.
My husband is disabled, he suffered a stroke three years ago. I work, but between his income and mine, we're not able to pay this increase.
Por favor, les pido, nos ayuden, que la renta se freeze, que no más incremento. Es un abuso. Yo vivo, y también me cobra lo de los cuartos, el 116 dólares por cada cuarto.
So I ask you to please help us, please freeze the rent. Where I live, they're also charging a surcharge of 116 dollars per room.
Les pido el favor, que, por favor, freeze en la renta, piensen en los pobres. Todos necesitamos vivir y vivir dignamente. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you.
I ask you to please freeze the rent, please think of the poor, and we all deserve to live with dignity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to make an announcement. It's almost 8:30. If you want to speak this evening, you need to register with the RGB staff in the lobby by 8:30. Thank you.
Último aviso, que si alguien no se inscribió para testificar y quiere hacerlo, se tienen que apuntar antes de las 8:30, que son dos minutos.
Thank you. Anderson Fizamí?
Good evening, board. How are you?
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
I'm a rent-stabilized preferential rent tenant from Richmond Hill, New York. I've been there 14 years. I'm a native of Brooklyn, grew up in a rent-controlled apartment on Grove Street, and it's that apartment that allowed my parents to punch our ticket to the middle class. And that's what I think our brothers and sisters are here seeking, is your help to allow them to stay in their community, stay in their homes, and raise their families with the same opportunity that the city has always provided. My landlord is a decent landlord, a smart landlord, a patient landlord. He knows the rules of the game, and he plays by them. So every time a long-term tenant has moved out, he has gone in, completely renovated the units. He's played by the rules. And playing by the rules, he has taken away the new tenant's power. Because rent stabilization allows you to stay in your home, in your community, call 311, ask for repairs, challenge MCIs or unlawful rent increases without fear of losing your home. And once that unit is destabilized, there's no power. Look at the situation at 85 Bowery. The only reason why that's even in the news, why that's getting the attention, is because those residents are rent-stabilized. If those residents were market rate tenants, there'd be nothing to say. I see my time is almost up, so I'm gonna be quick. You, especially the public members, are our only engagement in dealing with this system, a system of profit. The landlords are here for profit. We are here testifying because of need, the need for our homes, the need for our communities. It's very, very, it's really, really clear, and it's really, really simple. Are we gonna go with need, or are we gonna go with profit? And you are making the choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The next three speakers will be Rosaba Contero, Bianca McPherson, and Lisa Baxter. Rosaba Contero? Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Buenas, buenas noches, Dios te bendiga a todos, y gracias por escucharnos. Yo vivo en el 37 52 de la 89th Street, apartamento 11 Jackson High, niñor 11 372. Vivo en el 37 52 de la 89th Street, Jackson High. Vivo por 41 años en este edificio. El señor Jonah Rosenbaum es el dueño, el manager, el dueño del BRG. Y desde 2010, SCRI, SCRI me frizo la renta. Pero todos los, cada dos años yo voy, me da un contrato para que yo lo firme, pero él no respeta la renta frizada, ni lo que él me cobra sobre el dinero que aparece en el contrato.
Good evening. I live at 37 52 89th Street in Jackson Heights. I've been there for 41 years. The property manager or landlord is Jonah Rosenbaum, and since 2010, I've qualified for SCRI rent freeze. And however, every year I get a new lease from the management company, and every year they try to charge me a lot more money than my increased amount than what's on my frozen rent.
Ahora, en estos días, me llegó el recibo de 400 dólares, me lo aumentó a 700, a 793.94. Pero me está cobrando 25 dólares por tres meses, que porque yo no le pagué la renta, yo le pagué mi renta al tiempo, porque yo lo pago los tres primeros días del mes.
Right, so I got a bill, I got an invoice, that where instead of 400 dollars, it asked for 793 dollars and 94 cents, and plus a 25 dollar surcharge for late payment of rent, because I pay my rent in the first three days of the month, instead of on the first of the month.
Ahora me mandó un recibo por 1,652 dólares. Y yo no tengo el dinero, y entonces me toca estar prestando dinero, y no sé qué me lo va a prestar, ni qué me lo va a hacer, qué me va a mudar del apartamento, porque yo no tengo para pagar esta renta. Yo soy una persona retirada, y mi income por el socio secretario es muy bajito. Fuera de eso, en mi casa hay muchos ratones y cucarachas, no solamente mi apartamento, en todo el edificio. Como yo no sé si que el compra, los inspectores que vayan allá a mirar los apartamentos, y entonces dicen que no hay evidencia ni de ratones, ni de cucarachas, y con ese cuento le aumenta la renta la gente.
So most recently, I received an invoice for 1,652 dollars. I don't have that money, and I don't even know where I could borrow it from. There's, I'm retired, I receive social security income, and it's very low. Aside from all that, we have mice and we have roaches in my apartment and all over the building, and I don't know how, if he's buying off inspectors or what's going on, but when they've come, they say that they didn't find anything, and he's just kept increasing our rents.
Thank you. I'm sorry your time is up, but I appreciate your testimony. Thank you very much. Bianca McPherson?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. My name is Bianca McPherson. I'm a tenants' rights advocate. I'm also a rent-stabilized tenant living in Jackson Heights, Queens. Tonight I want to share some of my understandings on what's happening in New York City's housing crisis, and want the Rent Guidelines Board, and why the Rent Guidelines Board must decide on a rent freeze this year. Not just for one year, actually, but for two-year lease renewals. My understandings come from my experience as an advocate and a rent-stabilized tenant. Before I get into it, I do want to thank Shayla and Leah for being great advocates on our behalf. Organizing tenants and forming tenant associations are the best way to fight the injustices landlords today take advantage of. However, landlords find ways to diminish any organizing that happens in their buildings. Just yesterday, a landlord threatened to call the police on a colleague of mine for holding a tenants' meeting in the lobby. This stops tenants from exercising or even learning their rights as rent-stabilized tenants. The followings are the different ways landlords benefit and gain revenue increases from this blockage of organizing. One, major capital improvements. Two, preferential rents. I want to really get into vacancy bonuses and individual apartment increases. When tenants can't pay the rent increases because of the major capital improvements or preferential rents or other different increases, the only option is to move out. When this happens, the landlord adds a 20% vacancy bonus to the legal rent. They also add an individual apartment increase to the legal rent, which are not always valid. Tenants that move out are not always informed on these increases and just pay whatever they agree to pay. In my case, the landlord has added individual apartment increases in my rent for minor repairs in my apartments, which do not qualify as individual apartment increases, improvements, sorry. Unfortunately, there's a four-year look-back limit to challenge these issues. If it goes unchallenged, the landlord keeps the increased revenues. These are just a few ways landlords get their increased revenues. Still, many of these increases are fraudulent, and unfortunately, DHCR fails to check any of this unless a tenant starts an overcharged case. Even in their rent histories, HCR provides a disclaimer not attesting to the truthfulness of the owner's statements or the legality of the rents reported in the documents.
Excuse me, can you wind up your testimony, please? Your time is up.
Sure, I'll wrap it up. Yes, we know the laws need to be changed and made stronger for tenants. What also needs to be changed is the different factors this board takes into consideration to make a decision. Landlords don't need the extra income. They're fine taking advantage of all the loopholes in the rent laws. If this board decides on an increase, please let the mayor know that he is a portrayal to the tenants of New York City and does not stand with us. We're done asking, we're demanding a rent freeze. Thank you.
Lisa Baxter? Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Lisa Baxter. I've been on dialysis for 12 long years, and I got a new kidney. I'm also a widow, and my husband passed away, and I had to revive him in the apartment that I'm trying so hard to stay in and trying to live and eat. I'm a social worker, and I work, and I make less than the rent. And I worry every month that, I'm worried that they would put me out or raise the rent or do whatever they do. I live in a rent stabilization building, Zara Building, and I also live and work in this community. I would hope that you would really consider what we're saying. Put yourself in our shoes, that you live somewhere, and you're so happy. I was so happy when my husband and I moved in that place. We felt so good and felt so safe. And now that I'm a widow, I have to worry about what I'm gonna eat and what I'm going to do next. No, it's not right. I thank God, you know, to still be here and be alive and be able to walk. I'm very weak right now, standing before you. I'm hungry, but I had to come here to let you know that you gotta help us. You gotta make a difference. You gotta do something. We can't live like this. We can't stay like this. Come on now. Do the right vote, do the right thing, do whatever you got to do. Hear us, make it zero. Don't let it raise any higher. Please hear us. We march today. We care. So please care about us, because we're caring right now, not just about us, but for other people. So help us, help us, help us, and hear us. Thank you.
Thank you.